I guess this Porsche maybe later on here tonight, but we have most everyone.
I didn't think he was gonna come to the AC yet, like he's working on.
The council has before them a manager's report of March 26th in order to help communicate during this meeting, I'm going to, with your indulgence, work through a PowerPoint with issues that we may have on the agenda and then other issues facing the city. Okay? Obviously, it's our vision, mission, I'm gonna sound like a private record, if we don't got it, we don't know what direction we're heading in, and we need to grow this town, and that's what I went towards, mission as well. The agenda, issues for the agenda include a date for the next meeting, whether we have it on Easter Monday or Tuesday, accepting a bid for painting the city building, and we'll touch on that in a minute, airport zoning overlay, depot on-street parking, Adelphi, Delphi Henry subdivision, Civil Service Commission, ratified employee agreement with Askey, and then issues that are ongoing, you can see noted. First issue that you might want to consider, the meeting is on Easter Monday, if council's a preference, we can re-advertise and make it the Tuesday, intent, if not, we can just move on.
Anybody have a preference? Do you, Alex, do you?
I'll suggest a re-advertise.
I don't have a problem with Monday.
Monday's Monday. Painting the building, we've advertised to do this, this is a sample of what we're looking at painting, the building, what color? Last week, we received bids, the bids were to do the work, and then we would buy the paint, so that's kind of where we're at now. The low bid is about $8,000.
For the labor.
Labor, and paint is?
Approximately $5,000.
About $5,000.
$5,000?
Yeah.
This doesn't give you the scope, but the picture before, it's all the windows, all the trim.
Prepping, painting, oiling the hinges, or?
It is prepping, cleaning, and then, you know, the painting.
All the caulking and everything else that goes with paint, right? But we said on that green?
No, we haven't purchased it yet.
It was green, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's probably not for representation. Come down, we've got paint samples if you're interested.
It's pretty green.
You can see the caulking and the aging.
Yeah, some green, some red.
So, what about the blue, the blue stays blue?
No, no, no.
The blue gets painted green too?
Everything gets that color.
I definitely can't.
You can't really tell from this shot, but if I were to zoom in, you can see Joe touched a little bit of that trim to give us an idea how it would go onto that, on the left-hand window there.
Oh yeah, I see it.
So, that just gives you an idea of what we're up to, related to this. And I don't have the picture on this slide, on the tower side, there's basically a what? A whole wall that is corrugated.
It's actually this wall.
This wall here, it's corrugated, that will be painted as well, and that's a lot of square feet, but every one of these windows are, will be prepped and painted.
Eleven garage doors.
Eleven garage doors, yeah.
They green, they going green?
I assume we were going with white with them.
For the garage doors.
Yeah. How about the white on those windows there presently there?
That is vinyl.
Is that what, are you painting or not?
No.
I think it should stay that way, white outline like that. A few years, a few years back, all of the blue faces that you see up top, you see those white joints, a few years back, those were all re-caught, those are in real nice shape, the upper perimeter, the windows need some coffee.
And that's all part of the bid, that's all part of the deal.
How many codes?
Two.
Two, is there a primer code?
No. I've had Sherman Williams, Sherwin Williams here different times, looking it over, explaining to me how to, how to prepare and what type of paint, we're using an extremely very good paint, something on the order that you might see like at Kennywood or Idaho on a lot of their outdoor metal, it's, it's supposed to hold up really well.
Time frame for this, do we have?
I would like to start it here in a sprint, possible.
How long does it take to do it?
I did not put any on there. I do, I do, in my bid, I did put brush and roller, conventional method, no, no airless spray or nothing, we don't want to, we don't want to put up with that around this building, all the parking and cars and that, so it'll all be done brush, roller.
Was that oil, top oil, lower latex, latex over oil?
That is a baked-on finish, and according to Sherwin Williams, and what I found, we're gonna use an acrylic latex.
Next, as we talked about on April 9th, we're looking to schedule a public hearing for the airport zoning overlay, this is a quick image of the requirement, just briefly about Derry Township, Derry Borough, City Latrobe, Unity Township, and Mount Pleasant Township to the south.
Alex, can you stand over?
Yeah.
On the other side.
Sorry about that mic.
Okay.
As you can see, the airplanes approach this way, so the, if you will, the cone or the funnel is wider out there, that's just to give you the idea of the approach of the air, airport, this, the runways are not to be approached this way, obviously, because of their, the way they're oriented. The further from the edge of the runway to the edge of that cone, the height requirements are less strict, the closer to the runway, the height requirements are stricter, shorter requirements. For the airport to continue to be in good graces with federal aviation and state regs, all the municipalities that are highlighted here need to have the zoning in place to protect the runway and the approach zones. So the planning commission has had a chance to look at it, our solicitor has drawn up based on the standard airport overlay language that the state has developed, the ordinance for our community, you know, we look to have a hearing on April 9th, we haven't advertised for that yet, but that's the schedule.
It should be in today's, or this week's newspaper, yeah, the advertisement, I think it'll be in tonight's and next month's.
So if you have any questions, come and see me, I've got more information. A subject that we talked a little bit about last meeting is the idea of adding some parking spaces on-street on Depot, Depot Street is on 981 South through the City of Latrobe, it has parking on every block from White Furniture except for Depot Street, that's the portion of Depot Street between Ligonier and Jefferson, so it has it from Jefferson to the bridge in Alexandria to Ligonier. What I'd like the council to consider is to put the placement of on-street meters along the street, if you have a preference aside, you certainly can do that, but what I'd like to have on the agenda for next meeting on April 9th is a vote related to this issue.
Will you lay it out for us a little more, hit where you plan, not here, I mean, is this some sort of a diagram?
Well sure, at least in the minimum, I'll show you, you know, for the businesses that are located here, there's limited, there's actually what, four parking spaces on Ligonier and none on Jefferson, none on Jefferson there, in other words, there's very little on-street parking here around their businesses, whereas Main Street?
I was asking, where do you want the new parking space?
I'm just giving you the context, the Main Street, there's parking all the way through, which is the north road of 981. What we're proposing are ten spaces beginning about here, going through to the Latanzio Building down there, allowing for a left-hand turning space in there on the other side. The way that Depot Street runs south is the single lane or the center lane is straight only, the right lane is right only, and the left is left only. We could ask Pendot to consider making, for example, the right lane, which practically no one uses, make that a right straight. We could put the parking on that side, which would be, you know, again, driving south, the right-hand side. Well, what we're proposing, what public works, and I've drawn up, is to opportunity to put ten spaces along these, these would be short-term meters to accommodate these businesses who have a high turnover and short-term customers. The other motive is quite frankly, to get coins for the garage and pay off our debt, and to be able to react when the community college comes and displaces parking on this side of town, so those are some of the issues.
Okay, I wouldn't, when we met the last time, the chief wasn't in agreement, Richard and I were either down arguing or agreeing. I think it's standard.
What side of the street, we're going down, it's getting to be on the left-hand side.
Left, yeah, just like it is now.
We already have parking, we already have parking on?
From the left-hand side.
From the light, from the light down, right, to put parking on every side, so you only have two moving lanes in Depot Street for those blocks to begin.
Already, and then you go down and you only have that as well, because you've got parking on the right-hand side down by where Community College would be.
Would we consider maybe just doing half a dozen first to see if it works?
Well, the solicitor and I talked about a temporary 90-day.
Yeah.
You have to get permission from Pendot.
We already have that.
So there's no sense in us putting?
We have it, Richard.
You already have it, but what?
We have, Pendot allows us to put parking.
What?
Pendot has allowed us to put parking.
Has allowed, have you given this specific proposal to them?
They, they, they said, we have the right to put parking as long as we follow their guidelines, I said specifically between Jefferson and Depot, they said, put them like you put them around the other parts of town, and they can go there.
Because it's not a lot, I think what Alex is saying is it's no different than having parking on Main Street, because that's?
Yeah, the block we didn't have parking on was Ligonier Street, Jefferson Street there, that's where we're gonna pick up, we're gonna pick up right there.
No brainer.
Yeah.
Well, what's the problem? I, I don't think that there are many right-hand turns at Depot and Jefferson, I think there's a lot of left-hand turns, so that's why I would see, if you do anything, which personally don't favor, but if you do anything, I would think that you would put the parking on the north side.
If you have to cross the street to get all the businesses, it'd be better to have, I think if you're going for parking, the way I would think is put it on the left-hand side, you don't have to cross the street, you get the majority of the business.
Joe?
There's a couple of issues with parking on the north side, first of all, you wouldn't get as many spaces, because we have an exit from that parking lot coming out, and we don't want to go right up to that, we have an entrance and an exit to what I call the boarding lot up here.
Right.
And so the people coming out right there won't be able to see if the cars are parked or?
Well, I would not want to take it up, we wouldn't get as many on that side, if we decide to do that.
Continuous throughout, like the Depot Street.
All right, please keep that's agreed.
Well, that's why I still want to know.
One opinion.
Well, I think it's a great business, well, he's the police chief.
I understand, I, with all due respect, I, you know, it's one opinion.
It's one opinion, but safety, well, it's good to me, it's the, how does it?
Mayor, you have to agree with the manager, what goes on the agenda, it's up to the mayor and the manager.
Oh, it's okay, I don't care if it's on the agenda, then you vote, if it's the majority, that's fine.
I'd like to see that in writing, if we have the right to do that, put them on either side, pack it, I'd like to see that from the manager.
It's okay, but I'm okay putting it on the agenda.
Why can't you just take his word for it?
Well, you know what?
I mean, do you, don't you trust him? I don't think it's a question of that, I think it's a question of doing things the proper way. Doing things the lawyerly way, and doing things the practical way.
He wants to see it, what's the difference, why shouldn't he see it?
Yeah.
But, yeah, put it on the agenda.
Do you have it written, Alex?
I can request Pendot.
Would you show them your plan, I've never seen the plan.
Sure, I'll show them.
I haven't seen it, I mean, we see it when the maintenance, that more.
I made an attempt to visit and walk the street with you, you and I looked at Ligonier Street.
I like seeing your plan.
I'll show you.
Where you intend to put them.
Yeah. Okay. Put it on either.
There'll be ten spaces, what we propose on that left-hand side, heading south between the businesses and Latanzio, corner Jefferson and not Depot, so.
Rosie, weren't you saying maybe only start with half of those?
We have a spec on, we have a lot of spec.
Respectable.
I don't know, I mean, there's a debate about.
Rose, I'm not a market man, but what do you mean by half, you mean that?
Five.
I mean, if you're talking from Ligonier Street down to Jefferson, five right there.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just asking a question.
Because we have all that parking there already.
I'm asking, I'm asking, because I know some people aren't comfortable with it, and I'm a little concerned if it goes too far down the street, it's definitely, I mean, there are times when the turning lane is backed up the whole way, as is the middle lane, so.
And the right lane is completely empty.
Yeah, we're gonna start merging in, that's why I still think this is.
So, you're just, we're just shifting the traffic over one lane.
So could we consider?
And you make the right lane a straight right, is that what you said, Alex? You would request that the right?
We could request that the right turn, Depot, the right-hand turn in a straight lane.
Currently it isn't.
Yeah, right now, if you can think of Main Street, it moves, like this, as a park shifts, you can do that kind of shift here at the same, and buy a little more space, so you could do one of two things, one, make the center lane a left-hand turning lane, the far-left lane a parking-only lane, if you will, and that right lane a straight or right lane. Again, like you do when you get to Ligonier on Main Street, and you're going up towards Alexandria, you shift, because the parking swaps sides, because when the man is to the west side.
Yeah, but you make the left-hand turn at Ligonier.
What I'm saying is you can change, you know, I'm just saying, we could do another proposal.
If you're coming up, and you're coming up Main and Jefferson to Ligonier, you make a left-hand turn, there's no parking on the left-hand side, but you're proposing to put it on the south side, so if you're coming down Depot, there's parking on the south side, and you're gonna make a turn from the middle lane or to go left?
No, that would actually be?
No, it is.
The left-hand lane, because there would be no middle lane, a middle lane requires three lanes of traffic, that would be two lanes of traffic.
Okay, but the present middle lane, he probably says to make that the left-hand.
Or could we consider five?
I think it is different.
No, I think we ought to just go the whole way, that's just how great about this country, you know, next two months from now, you get the both instead of working. Yeah, we took both, it's like, there's how many spaces you could on left, but Joe's, I see what Joe's saying, if you put them on the right, you don't get as many spaces, and you're gonna be, well, you coming out of that parking lot.
I would want them on the right.
Mr. Skor, if, my opinion is, if we're gonna cut that block down to two lanes instead of three, we might as well get the most space that we can, that was, that was Alex's nice line of thinking, whatever, council.
An issue that will be before council is an issue to allow for the business in 1901 to have some loading area for daycare or drop-off area, and this is a request that came to us actually today, and the chief and the public works, you know, will look at it, certainly between now and then, I think they've already have some ideas, this would be a request that you'll consider that night. Where's that at, Sam Giraffes? This is the former auto care place?
It can be a loading zone, it's a drop-off.
Yeah, I might word it wrong.
That's Sam Giraffes.
On the side Harrison Avenue, they wanted.
On the side street?
Okay, good.
They wanted on Ligonier or on the side?
Harrison Avenue.
Harrison.
Alongside of Harrison.
What's the name of the business?
Right here.
Late trip chiropractic clinic, would they?
Jimmy, if I'm turning down there, and he wants it on the left-hand side, you're gonna cross traffic.
I think wants it on the right-hand side, right against this building there, right against these laws.
As you're coming up on the right.
Yeah, you're coming up Harrison, and the one big issue is, if that's gonna be the case, there needs to be a mirror split on the opposite side of the street, because when you're coming up Harrison, he has cars parked in his lot, you can't see the right side of Ligonier Street, so there needs to be a mirror there to do that.
Have the silver paper.
Okay, there'll be a subdivision, the planning commission will meet next week to consider a subdivision at the Adelphi Properties, basically a swap of land between two property owners, you'll have the maps and mapping for you that night after the planning commission reviews it. This is the area where the St. Vincent, or the Vincent Hall and the new six-story property is, along the way down there. We have a need to appoint a new member to the Civil Service Commission, we've had a member who has been non-responsive for quite some time, and we believe is now living in another community, nonetheless, we need to vacate that position and replace that position. Right now, it's important the civil service be fully constituted, so we can move forward with the police, we've not been able to, and should we describe it better, promote our officers and provide for them a task because of our current civil service makeup.
Do you have anybody?
We have a candidate or?
We need people, so.
You need one?
Correct.
Pete Butchett and Bill Glasser, are they still, that is involved right now?
Those are the two that are active. So we could use a person from the public to serve the community, it'll be, what, is that three-year term? I don't know, might be five here, but.
I think it's five, yeah. If they don't reside within the city, I'm pretty sure I'd have to look at our ordinance, but I'm pretty sure they have to be a resident, so that would be our basis for disqualification on the commission in any event, in addition to, not being responsible, be a resolution to declare that position to be vacant, and then probably a motion authorizing Barbara to advertise for the position.
On April 9th meeting, we look to have a ratification of employee agreement with Askey. Ratified the new employment agreements we have with community service officer and full-time or part-time meter attendant, part-time community service officer and part-time meter attendant.
When we get that job, we'll be all Askey then.
Well, that's, we're, do we intend to have an executive session regarding?
Yeah, we're gonna have an executive session, end of meeting.
This is a picture of the new parking garage, just wanted to give council an idea of what's going on there, a couple of things to point out, obviously, this is a rebar mesh pattern, this is a section of the upper deck that had the concrete board on a couple Fridays ago, just a, in note, we've, again, we're not engineers, I'm not an engineer, but have talked at length with the engineering, that some of the differences to note related to this and the old mesh pattern is, one, the size, they're about 12-inch squares as opposed to the larger 16-inch squares, the heavy, heaviness of the rebar, mainly number fives on top and number fours on the bottom, the ties with the existing rebar and where those tied in, that's another issue of concern that we've talked a great deal about, and basically, they tie in with a strand, if you will, a metal strand, and the grade of that strand, again, has been, we've discussed that and some of the other issues related to the quality, and then again, how do the new bars and the old bars interface with the existing concrete, you know, it's been an ongoing design discussion. So a couple weeks ago, about the mayor and what, a handful of us got a chance to tour the building, and we spent some time, we meet every other week with contractor and at the building here, and then we meet with them as well on site, looking at the job, but this is a picture of, a good picture of, kind of what they're doing for the rehab job.
They're building that everywhere they're gonna put concrete patches.
Correct, and I don't know what percentage they're at now, but it's fair to say that they probably have cut out more than they planned to, I think at the end of the day, but it'll be pretty close to what they spec, what they thought, but the beauty of the design build is, at least at that point, they're gonna eat that part of the cost, now, obviously, you know, they want to make money at the end of the day. Now, related to the parking garage, this is detailed in the manager's report, the bids specs for electrical, mechanical plumbing are due this Friday, they'll be opened up at 11:00 a.m. Friday here in city council chambers, so if you're interested in seeing what those prices are, stop by. As well, you ought to know, you know, I don't know what it is today, but we're concerned, or we, I don't know, concerned right where, we want to have four or five people bidding for each of these, you know, so, we're not sure, it's hard to tell, they can pick up packets online, or they can pick them up here, we haven't had a lot of customers come here to do that. So, electrical, obviously is lighting, mechanical is primarily the elevator, there's only so many elevator companies out there, and then the last issue is plumbing, which is pretty much straightforward and, you know, if you will, the stack pipes and so forth related to.
Drain, drains only, there's no running water in there.
Yeah, I think for wash downs and stuff, do they have some running water in there?
We just, there is only one access to water, which is on the bottom courtyard plaza, when that's washed down, we use fire equipment.
So if anybody's in the mechanical, electrical plumbing business, and they want a little bit of work, it's theirs to take. We've talked about the sidewalk issue on spring and welding, change order, again, the price we have now is $42,000, it's basically $8.75 a square foot, we've gone quite around on this one, you know, if we were doing a sidewalk for your house, you obviously could get a lower price, maybe $5, $6 a square yard, however, this job has prevailing wage requirements, if we were to bid it out, we'd likely find ourselves in the same situation with prevailing wage. The challenge, if we went to bid it out and don't do it as a change order, is, you know, the idea of building the garage and then after the fact, replacing the sidewalk, and it may infringe upon the side, or the garage being open, so, we move forward, or I move forward to ask them to, you know, to go ahead and do this on both the spring and welding street sides, it's quite a lot of sidewalk, and I think at the end of the day, it's gonna be a nice complement to a good-looking garage.
Is that just in front of the entrance?
Both side, and it goes basically from like a tan fray, for example, or the club on the other side, up to Dr. Ramsey's building and the, is it Laura Seaman, is that?
Yes.
Yeah, Chuck Seaman's building.
It's the entire length of our garage.
Are you calling for, I presume you are, eight-inch sidewalks at the entrance ways?
Yeah, it varies at the entry, but like the driveway.
You have super strength?
Yeah, it will be able to handle the weight, and as well, it will conform to the pay stations that will, again, there'll be gated attendance, you know, unintended meters, if you will, or unattended gates, you know, to allow for access to garage, you get your ticket, so we're gonna do the curving, we'll be all modified to accommodate that as well, which is one of the reasons we wanted to do it while they were there working.
It'll all be a 5,000-pound floor, which is very good, what's in there now is probably a 4,000-pound floor, it's not what you would appreciate here.
And again, just referring back to the other issues related, there's gonna be a parking authority meeting tomorrow, and this is on page, you know, to the manager's report, you can see some of the issues related to parking collection systems and so forth. One of the issues I don't mention in here on the PowerPoint that I will mention is the effort to put the liquid fuels, or get the alleys onto the liquid fuels map, and Joe and I need to meet with our engineer to figure out which one's eligible for that, and we'll work with council to prepare whatever's needed for the agenda on that for April 9th. Community college, again, this is just a rendering from the consultant, of interest to us is the, are the properties, you know, that are nearest to the stream and to the bridge, the Lloyd Avenue Bridge, in this particular rendering, the building addresses Jefferson and Depot, using an idea of the scale, that's a pretty big issue, we'd love for, you know, if anyone wants to come by the council and talk about some of these, it'd be good to do that. Five-year garbage contract, back in the room here are three containers, 96, 60, and 36, I believe, for you all to look at, with the new garbage contract, we're looking at going to a single-stream recycling, we want to give you an idea of what scale we're talking about as it relates to containers, I'd welcome the council after the meeting to pull them and tug them and check them out, let us know what you think as we move forward on that. Early intervention plan, we have a meeting on Wednesday here at the city, with the consultant.
Alex, you have the new contract?
Not with me.
No, do you have it done?
Yeah, we made the edits. We need, I need to go back with you on that, yeah.
All right, can you send me that, please, now?
Alex, did you get my email that I, I'm not gonna wait?
Yes, I sent you twice and it bounced back for some reason. I'll just, sent it back once on my tablet, and then I sent it once from my laptop and both of them came back to me.
Yeah, those are recycling bins, are they?
Yeah, single-stream recycling bins basically allows you to do everything from a pasta box
Right.
or a cereal box, cardboard, to glass, metals.
Newspapers, you know.
Now, if you use one of those, you'll reduce your waste stream, and I think we'll find recycling will increase in this community. But it's a question of size, and which one will be the choice size?
How often?
Yeah, once a week, but, you know, do we go with the larger size, medium size, or the small size and so forth? Obviously, not every family's the same. So on Monday, if you want to come by council chambers, we're gonna meet with the consultant to hear the, related to the early intervention plan. It's just a work session to hear from them. Act 537, you know, we talked about these already, but the UTMA requested their engineer provide a, you know, if you will, a review, a critique of the LMA, and I spent some time with Kenneroy today to meet with him on that subject. But it continues, obviously, and we talked a little bit about the idea of a tank. And there's a lot to be discussed on this one, but obviously, just want to keep you informed. Other issues are just ongoing, again, related to both my manager's report, and I just have a couple slides. St. Vincent Trail, probably one of the most important priorities for this community is to connect with that college and the economic opportunities that can avail of that connection. Police service agreements, I forgot about you, Jimmy, St. Vincent and I, we talked last week, and we're looking at, again, continuing that discussion. Nice-looking car, by the way. Ron assures me that poles will be gone in a couple of weeks.
[laughing]
But if you notice, there's no lines on any of the poles until you get down towards the, and this particular picture was before the cable went away. But if you took a picture today, there would be no lines on the poles except for the last couple there by the volunteer fire company, number six. We met with the state downtown revitalization, Defense Department Downtown Center. They do an annual audit, if you will, review of the downtown program. We did that last week and it was pretty, I think, good. This year's contract is up for FOP, so I would like the mayor to consider committing related to the contract and where we head from there.
We have committed. Rosie, and that's your committee?
Which one?
Police?
Personnel.
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 Do we have a personnel?
No, we did, yeah, me, you, and Mike.
Wasn't me, I didn't do the contracts. It was Chuck, Don, and I.
No, well, no, but remember, well, I'll let you know.
Yeah, it was me and Mike and Chuck.
Chuck did the last one.
No, but I know, but I mean, well, not for the contract, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, all right.
I think we did talk about it, but I don't know if we ever, I mean, we might have signed what, we signed what we were interested in, and then I don't know what happened after.
Yeah, okay.
We're gonna be looking at revamping the city's website. We're doing some discussions with what that might look like. Of course, Lloyd Avenue Bridge, still an ongoing, you know, some of those issues. Does anybody, nobody, somebody wants to buy a big piece of property that's actually one of our largest taxpayers in town? Because if you do, I'd really like to talk to them. We have a building for sale.
What about the, I think you and I talked about, was that after, Crowell's I saw is filed for bankruptcy?
Yeah.
Yeah, I contacted the realtor, who's listing the property and still has his name on the sign. He assures me that John Eagle and they are still moving forward with their contract in nation and local marketing. It'll be under a new name in two years.
I understand the building is a bit stripped.
We toured the building back in, I believe, December, November with the realtor, and you are correct, the bottling equipment, assembling, packaging equipment in lines are all removed. However, the, you know, the utilities, you know, and heating and cooling and, you know, the utilities, the lighting and all that, still remain. So if there's another kind of industrial interest, the building's ready to be adapted to.
What about a hockey rink? Is there room in there for a hockey rink here, Alex? It's expensive.
I bought it into a parking.
[laughing] We're gonna have so much freaking parking in this town by the time we're done.
Wow, you could have bought that for three million, too.
Yeah.
And how much is it getting along?
Just the last thing, you know, we're moving forward with, you know, Jared, and he's our outreach coordinator and sustainability coordinator and some of the issues. Jimmy's got some interns in his room. We've got some, I've got an intern now from St. Vincent. Beauty of the interns that we have, I think, ours are free, yours are free, right? You know, it's great to have free labor. That's basically my run-through of the agenda. Again, you have a report before you. This was just meant to supplement. Not all issues were on there. My goal is, in the future, to have for the agenda prep session, a little bit of the PowerPoint, only to use to help us discuss and frame the issues.
Yeah, I like the way this was done.
At the typical meeting, we won't do this unless requested and we need a detail. It's your meeting where you make those decisions. Unless you want me to prepare or back, then we will. But for this meeting, I see it as appropriate.
I see it more for this meeting.
This is a point of interest. Have you heard anything about Pango? I mean, in response?
Tomorrow, the parking authority will be voting on their side of it.
Have you heard anything from the public? I've heard some comments, but pretty negative.
Sure. I've heard some negative ones, too. Not a lot, so.
Yeah, but I think that one of the issues we brought up is it's, they take seventeen percent off the top.
Of the money that goes through Pango?
Yeah, seventeen percent, plus it costs another twenty cents to process.
But if somebody puts coin in the meter, they don't get any of that, right?
Correct.
So out of every, if you have a dollar, seventeen cents goes to Pango and twenty cents goes to the...
I'm not sure that's the way the contract reads, but we can talk more about that. Seventeen percent, correct, twenty percent?
Twenty cents, twenty cents out of every transaction is the way I've got it. So that a dollar transaction, theoretically, would be thirty-seven cents goes out of it. I mean, that was one of the comments.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, people have to look at the reality that we don't find any equipment, we're not hiring an IT staff, whereas Pittsburgh, which will do a pay-by-phone kind of app, has to do that. They do it in house with staff. So, yeah, they're gonna get a cut of the action because they're providing the service. The question, like Mike was saying, is, you know, what will be the inevitable movement towards Pango? And the thought is, when you pay with credit card, you buy more? So they actually, people will use more time or charge more time to be willing to make a higher time purchase. So that'll offset some of the transaction cost. But we're doing a two-year agreement is what we're looking at, and, you know, we'll be able to judge at that time whether...
Do we have to pay them anything if we do nothing with it?
No, if nobody uses it, we don't pay anything.
There's gonna be some purchasing with signs, but it's minimal.
Other than that.
There's no guaranteed minimum amount of usage in the contract.
So we have to raise the rate seventeen percent, theoretically, or do you think that'll be offset because people are gonna use it? We have to raise the rate seventeen percent just to take care of Pango?
What's our labor cost to collect that line?
I don't know.
We actually save money, that's a good point, Mike. We save money with Pango by avoiding our labor costs of doing certain things.
Do you have that information available?
Yeah, and then we also get better data as far as he's using it where, which is we don't really have in our mechanical environment.
Well, it's great.
But back to your issue of rate, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, I think it's been, the council's been aware that when we decided to do the garage, that we would have to raise rates and fees and fines across the board for the parking. The question has yet to be determined at what level that rate is. So it is certainly relevant to discuss, and that's why I would call your attention to the study, the draft study that's been provided to council, where we have some rate, fee, and fine tables to review and comment on. If you think they're too high, now's the time to think about it. But eventually, maybe at the May meeting, you will be voting on what that rate, fine, and fee increase will look like.
Well, I have to know already how much to use in Pango, too, if seventeen percent is going on.
Very relevant, though. It's certainly something to work with.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And of course, people that use Pango, then, we subsidize by those, aren't we? Well, we have to raise the other rates to make up for the seventeen cents we don't get from Pango.
You can charge them a different rate, Richard. Do you understand that? You can charge a Pango rate a different rate than you do with meter. You can charge them a premium for doing it.
Okay, fine. Oh, I didn't realize that, but you never mentioned that before. In other words, instead of them paying a dollar, they'll pay a dollar seventeen.
If you choose, yeah, sure. Again, that's part of the rate structure. We haven't decided the rate structure yet. That's a great point. It's something worth, you know, kind of figuring out how, what's the best way to do it.
Couple of things, Alex. Any response yet from Regional Five, the state prison Greensburg, about their labor gain? We've gotten any, anything back from them?
Not yet.
They came in.
Pardon me, did visit you?
They came in to visit me.
Was that Mon, Wednesday?
Wednesday or Thursday.
Because, Joe, I know we were looking for them.
They just came in and introduced themselves and offered their services.
County, too?
We're looking at, yeah, adult remation. The thought was, people who are adept at society, they deserve a second chance and ought to pay the debt directly to the taxpayers. The thought, as well, is we want to work with the unions involved so that they talk in direct work that we aren't going to get to. In other words, in other words, it's stuff that we'd like to do, but we just don't have the manpower and don't anticipate having the manpower to do. Do you guys have some time to cruise up your way or?
Another thing, the unfortunate accident involving one of our Public Works employees, has anything been done to, yet to replace him, at least temporarily?
We've had discussions about a temp replacement. He's home, in recovery. I'm not, it's not clear to the extent of his time off, but we've talked about moving forward with the replacement employee. That person has not been called up or is in place yet.
Have we considered rehiring two temporary or summer employees again?
If they're available, they would be considered.
Maybe we should move forward with that at this point. When we have someone off, Joe, would that be to your liking?
I will always take help.
Well, you need professional help, but this guy's beside the point.
Just with, just with the way things are shaking down now, I mean, we have one guy on the street department, zero guys on the street department. We need help.
Perhaps we should move in that direction at this point.
We'll carry out.
And another thing, I don't know, this is upsetting to me, you know, on the national level, the state level, was the recently passed voter ID bill. I'm upset about this. I think it's falling for our state legislature and our governor to sign such a bill. It's unnecessary. I think as a council, we should perhaps pass a resolution in non-support of this. Or perhaps make, have an amendment in this town to go, I know it's probably illegal, but nonetheless, to make a statement that this bill is unnecessary, and it's nothing more than Republicans' attempt to suppress the vote.
Just make your own.
It's true.
You have to get off.
Huh?
You have to get off.
I'm not getting off that. I have a public forum here. I am a, I'm an elected official. I'm entitled to my opinion, and I decry this, the passage of this legislation.
You just, you decry anything the Republicans do, so it doesn't...
When it's wrong, it's wrong. What they did is truly wrong. And the whole time Governor Corbett was attorney general, did he find it in his power to once prosecute a case of voter fraud? No. Has there ever been a case of voter fraud in this town? No.
Okay, what, did you want to write a letter, write a word?
No, I have a...
It's a hundred-dollar bill.
This is something that's serious, and it's something that...
It's a little bit of a right to take off you every time.
Pardon me?
It's a little bit of a right to take off you every time.
We have a right to vote. And there's many of these, the guys that come to this council meeting every Monday. I'll bet you Mikey Judisch doesn't have a driver's license anymore, does he?
I think he does.
Huh? Huh? He does? Well, just for an example, there's a lot of guys that have no longer drive, that don't have proper ID, and you have to jump through hoops to go get identification to vote now. And yet, they've been going to the same polling place for sixty years, they know the poll workers, and now they won't be able to vote.
Wait a minute, how does that work? You mean to tell me that, like, if somebody doesn't drive, they're not gonna be able to vote?
If you don't have, if you don't have a proper identification that's approved by the state, you can't vote, Rosie.
You could get ID.
You can get ID, some people can get ID. You've got to jump through hoops, you've got to go to a licensing center, and you've got to get someone to drive you, you've got to get it notarized. That's BS. There was no evidence of voter fraud in this country except in minimum, minimum, minimum cases. Listen, one-tenth of one percent of the vote could be called fraudulent.
All right, okay. All right, we've done, we go have our meetings.
Now, I want to know what's going on with the, pardon me?
My text.
The crosswalks.
It's getting there.
What do you mean it's getting there?
It's getting there. There are a few other things that I have to get done first, i.e. the zoning ordinance, i.e. we have a pension plan.
I've been...
What's the difference, Mr. Baldener? If it's done today, tomorrow, or next?
It should have been done six months ago. It should have been done six months ago, so we can get a hand in that tip.
There's no statute, you have no statute of limitations.
I don't care about the statute of limitations. The statute of limitations is those crosswalks, by the time we get around to fixing, will deteriorate beyond the point of repair. That's my problem. You work for us, you work for us, Mr. Kelly.
You're right, us.
Right, us. Us as a council, a mayor, and a manager. And you're to do what we request you to do. We've requested you, I've been requesting this for how many months?
Right.
Every meeting, I. That's right. Oh, and this isn't for mine. This isn't for my benefit, Jim. This is for those, this is for the towns' benefit, this is for the city's benefit. Those crosswalks look like hell, and they have looked like hell, and we haven't done anything about it.
Filing it now or filing it a month from now is not gonna change the crosswalks.
Should the school district be involved in this, though?
Not at all.
No, it wasn't that contract.
Okay.
You will have your complaint, Mr. Baldener.
It's not my complaint, it's the city's complaint, Jim. Keep that in mind. It's the city's complaint. It's not mine. Why don't you get the press to be filed, Jim?
I get filed, press, I have filed a complaint in...
Maybe if you get the press to be filed, at least it'll be on their record. That'll be...
Whatever, whatever a press be.
Well, that informs them that they're...
It's called a writ of execution.
Doesn't require a complaint for thirty days.
I read in a paper the other day about the school district's plans to build a multipurpose facility at the high school. And talking to some people, I understand that there's actually gonna be a stadium with an athletic house.
Stadium.
It sounds pretty much like...
Isn't it like a ten million dollar thing?
An all-terrace field, and a practice field. An all-terrace stadium, a seating and a concession stand and a...
About three point five, what's that?
About three point five.
Yeah.
Ten million is what they...
My piece.
True, I know. I just wondered if we can get in some kind of conversation on what is that gonna let us be with Memorial Stadium, or what's their plans with Memorial Stadium? Hold the high school games at the high school, and what junior high games here, and eighth and ninth grade games here? I don't know.
It was my impression that they were gonna use that field, that's a practice and an all-purpose field for soccer, girls' lacrosse, that kind of stuff. That they're not using the stadium for at this point. They're gonna expand the tennis, the tennis track.
I know, it's an impression, that's why I'm asking, if we can get a plan from the district or...
It's worth looking into. And again, just want to find out what the specifics are. It's not clear, at least the articles I read, what exactly...
Right, it isn't clear, that's what I was trying to find out. Some people that I've talked to, I've talked to two school board members and an educator up there that said the information they have is their plan to run, again, eventually have the high school seniorized level sports there.
Well, I think that would be short sight on their part. I mean, to turn it back, I'm probably one of the nicest facilities in the...
I agree with you, that's why I'm asking if we can get involved, and that's what they plan. I agree with you, that's a short sight.
I think we should put something on a rough man and vote, and control what they're spending up there. I mean, like, there's something they need in this community.
That school board will spend whatever they want to spend.
Nobody goes to their meetings.
I understand.
You ever been to one?
You ever been to one of their meetings?
Well, yeah.
You don't necessarily make it real comfortable.
Well, I know.
They say that about us, but I...
Nobody says that about us.
People used to say that about us.
Nobody says that about us, everybody and their brother is welcome to speak here, we have every blooming, every... Doesn't matter. Alex speaks of our needs.